But the docking facilities as proposed along the northern boundary are located on property that is outside of the legal description of the property and within the property of the district. So the applicant will need to get permission from the district to be able to utilize the district's lands for their docks, number one. And number two, the access to the proposed docking facility that's within the boundaries, the cutout of the property also involves impacts to lands that are owned by the district that without some sort of accommodation between the district and the property owner, those that cut out may not occur. So there is an opportunity for negotiations with the applicant to have a voluntary joining of the district to make them subject to the same requirements and same funding that other members of the district would be subject to. So that's why I just wanted to make sure that the council understood, and the applicant I know understands as well, that the approval of this does not automatically approve the issues relating to the docking facilities that remain outstanding.
So can we require that that be part of the approval process? If it were to be approved, that we would mandate that they have to join the canal advisory?
There is no legal authority to do that. By the same token...
I mean, they're going to be using our canal system.
Not without resolving the legal issues that would impose impacts upon properties of the district, of the city, that would prohibit those docking facilities.
So they would have to go through the special permit process that goes through the canal maintenance district to get the approval?
And beyond. I mean, that basically addresses impacts or the regulations governing the size of the docks and, you know, the setbacks of the docks and all that. The greater issue that I have made clear early on is that the boundaries of this project and the work that's proposed are not one in the same. That there's work that's proposed that's on district property.
Right.
And for that work to be approved, we're going to need to work out with the applicant how it is that they're going to get the district's approval to put their facilities on district property. And of course, one of the things that we could acquire at that point in time, or not require, but work out as part of a resolution, is that in return for the district authorizing the use of its property for the facilitation of the docking facilities, the project will need to become part of the district. So that they'll need to apply for an extension of the boundaries of the district that would include those docking facilities.
We're speaking of the parallel dock on the outside of the mangrove square?
Both that and the interior cut of the facility, because that would cut through lands that the applicant does not own.
Okay. So then, is there any way for us to add any stipulations to the canal advisory committee?
I don't believe so, but...
Or direct staff, that in those negotiations, we need to make sure that...
I think you can be adequately assured that the city attorney is going to protect the city's interest with respect to that. Even though I'm certain that the applicant may not fully accept my legal opinion, my position would be that unless or until a court of competent jurisdiction determines otherwise, we own the lands that they are proposing to put docking facilities on or otherwise affect in order to facilitate those docking facilities. And it will be my consistent recommendation that the property owner needs to have some sort of ownership interest in those lands before they can put their facilities on our lands.
That would seem reasonable in that any usage, in order to use the waterway, which is maintained by the canal assessment district, it would only seem proper that they should participate as well.
Yeah. The problem is that the way that the district provisions in our code are worded, we do not have the authority to mandate properties to become part of the district. And so we will use the other leverages that we have to make sure that we are adequately protected.
Okay.
I may be able to resolve this discussion very quickly if I might. Jerry Waxler, McCrory Law Firm, representing Akiasta Pontagorda U.S., Inc., the applicant for the project. At this time, I will proffer that the applicant will apply to join the canal maintenance district in return for the authorization to use, I guess, cut across or utilize city lands, subject to separate approval for those uses. And I understand in making that proffer that you will base your decision partly on this proffer. And I also understand in making this proffer that courts have held that if you in fact base your decision on that proffer, and we do not follow through with that, that you have enforcement abilities. So that perhaps addresses some of your concerns there. Thank you.
Just to clarify, when I'm reading Exhibit D, it does not speak to any docking facilities.
Again, this is just a rezoning only, so...
Okay, because you said it was a permitted use.
Permissible use is part of the planned...
As part of their submittal of their development.
Yeah, right.
Okay. Because it doesn't exactly speak to that, but permissible use. Okay. So any other questions before we allow the applicant to do their presentation? Lynn?
I have a question with regard to the request for a PDV. Why a PDV versus multifamily if it's not going to include commercial elements?
Multifamily may increase the density on that site, and we would not want to do that. Under our code, if we go to a general multifamily, 15 units per acre, that would allow the applicant to have 15 units per acre. So it would be 15 times the total number of acreage on site, which would increase density, and that we would not allow. So this allows them to use the general single-family residential five units per acre and maintain them at that 528 entitled density per the site.
Okay. Forty-nine acres are unbuildable because they're wetland.
Correct.
Isn't that the case, no matter what gets built on the property, unless they mitigate it?
That is the case. However, we define the way we calculate density as the entire parcel, so they are allowed to calculate the entire parcel acreage.
I understand that. But for all intents and purposes, 49 acres, no matter what the zoning, 49 acres are to be maintained as wetland, correct? Unless it's mitigated?
Yes, if it's designated as wetland area, correct? There are some wetlands that are not, they're going to be preserved as areas for recreational ability. But there are 49 acres that will be preserved on site, yes.
I ask that question because I've received numerous emails from people asking what the specific density is going to be for this project if 49 acres cannot be built on. I understand the density can be transferred from the non-buildable to the buildable. I understand that part.
And this...
But no matter what they build, I mean, they're saying that they could build 528 homes on a single-family basis, however...
No, they are saying they are entitled to that density.
Right. If it was fully built out.
Correct.
But that's assuming that they would have to mitigate the 49 acres to be able to build on those, correct?
If they were to build on them, but if they accumulate and acquire, if they cluster the density into the areas under the multifamily, the code allows them to do that, and that is the path they have chosen. Our planned development allows them to do, to make that move. And having come before a city council, that gives you the authority to review each of those changes that will be made in the applications.
Okay. So let's look at this realistically. I guess this is where I'm going with this. Forty-nine acres are really technically not buildable right now.
They're not going to be used for building, correct?
Let me help.
Yes.
There's a difference between practical unbuildability and legal unbuildability. Theoretically, those lands are buildable with the appropriate mitigation, with the appropriate construction techniques, with the appropriate alteration of the plan to preserve as much of the area as possible. And that's why our code recognizes, at least our code recognizes, that acreage as being included in the total acreage of the property. If there were no upland areas that did not include wetlands on a piece of property, accommodations most likely need to be made to allow for development on that property, be it through avoidance, minimization, and mitigation. That's the legal side of things. The practical side of things would be, well, it's not buildable because there's wetlands. Well, there's very little property that's not buildable from a legal perspective. And that's the distinction in the terms. And you correctly said, it's not buildable without mitigation. And unfortunately, Joan wasn't really directly answering your question. So legally, it's buildable with mitigation, which is why pursuant to our code, that acreage, which is nevertheless maybe practically unbuildable without mitigation, is included in the total acreage for density purposes.
I guess my real bottom-line question of the whole thing is, if they cannot mitigate the 49 acres, realistically, if it kept the same single-family zoning, how many homes could they build, single-family?
It's not for the city to calculate, would it be?
I mean, I'm just trying to put numbers in perspective, because there's all kinds of numbers that have been thrown around on social media and emails that were sent to the council members. I just...
Well, and again, I think that's considering maybe the practical unbuildability versus the legal unbuildability. And so what Joan has indicated, based on the wording of our code, is that you do not exclude those wetland areas from the calculation of density. And so you look at the total property that's within the legal description and calculate acreage, consider the density per acres, and that's what you come up with, without consideration of either wetlands. And I'm not sure with respect to our particular code, but many jurisdictions also include internal water, like a lake or something, within the calculation of density too, because you can cluster homes in order to avoid having to utilize those areas that should not be built upon.
Okay. And I have one other question.
So do we need to go back through this, that she just went through about the growth density?
No, I understand where they're going with the density issue. I know it's the law, I don't agree with it, but it happens to be the law. I get that. One thing that was not brought into this equation was, back in November, when the council voted on this and we voted no, part of the criteria the city required that was not put in this application in the staff report was that the city wanted to see the applicant fund a dedicated right-turn lane, and I'm reading from the minutes of the meeting, "a funding of a dedicated right-turn lane from eastbound to Akiasta onto Tamiami Trail, a bike lane from Bell Harbor Boulevard to the project, proof of legal access to the 27-foot strip of land, and transfer of development rights for 220 units to be retained in the city as part of the tax base." Why was that not included in the staff report this time?
Those amenities will be reviewed, the right-turn lane specifically will be reviewed at the time of development review. Again, as this application is brought before us, this is, we are looking at strictly the change of the zoning from a general single-family to a planned development village, and any of those amenities will be added or not provided during the development review committee review. We'll take a look at those. As the area does not have the commercial component at this point, those additional amenities will not be as important, because nobody from the bike lane will be coming into the development to utilize the commercial component of the project.
But this request in November was also a rezoning.
And because it had the commercial component attached to it, it was a broader use of that property for them.
Can we get on with the applicant and then hash all of this out after we've heard everything on the table? Just so everybody knows, there are rules that guide these quasi-judicial proceedings, one of which the applicant would have 30 minutes to present, and they did ask me before if we would allow some extra time so that everything could be addressed. Would that be okay with the city council? Would that be fine?
I'd rather we be thorough.
Okay. So we have permission to go beyond the 30-minute time limit. We do not have any party intervenors, correct?
That is correct.
And then anybody else who would like to have public comment, you will have three minutes. And just know that if you do speak, any person present who wish to submit relevant information to the city council or board shall speak for a maximum of three minutes each, excluding any cross-examination or questions from the council or board members. All such persons shall be sworn and shall be subject to cross-examination by any party, just so you all know. Okay.
While we have that brief interlude, if there's anyone that's come in since the original request to be sworn by the clerk, or if you've decided since that time that you'd like to present testimony, you will need to be sworn by the clerk before you can testify. So please, if anyone has not yet been sworn, this would be the time, maybe we can get the new folks in here to rise and be sworn by the city clerk. And when you do approach the podium to make your comments, in addition to your name, please identify the fact that you've been sworn. So if there's anyone that has not yet been sworn that wants to provide evidence or testimony in this proceeding, please rise to be sworn at this time.
Do you solemnly swear or affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in today's proceedings? Thank you.
Jerry Waxler with the McCrory Law Firm, representing Akiasta Pontagorda U.S., Inc. I have been sworn. Before we begin our presentation, so that we can have a presentation that flows, I would ask if I may bring up my experts, each of them, to present their qualifications, and then I will ask that they be accepted as expert witnesses.
Yes, thank you.
For the record, I'm Ian Vincent, managing member of Ian Vincent and Associates, and I have been sworn. I have a Bachelor of Science degree in Resource Conservation and Management from University of Kentucky. Go Cats!
Go Tigers!
I've been working as an environmental consultant in southwest Florida for over 20 years. You do have my resume on file. I've been accepted as an expert on wetland wildlife and other environmental issues by this board in the past, and I would ask that you do the same today. Thank you.
Good morning. For the record, my name is Katie Burkey. I'm a senior planner with Kimley Horn &amp; Associates, and I have been sworn in. I provided you each with a copy of my expert planners' report as part of your package today, and my resume is included as Exhibit A to that packet. I hold a Juris Doctor and Master of City and Regional Planning degree from the University of North Carolina at Chapel Hill. Go Tar Heels! With a concentration in land use and environmental planning. I have been recognized as a Certified Land Planner by the American Institute of Certified Land Planners since 2012. I have over nine years of planning experience and have been recognized as an expert witness in planning and zoning matters, not only by the city of Punagorda, but also the Lee County Hearing Examiner, the Village of Astero in Okeechobee County. So I respectfully request that I be qualified again today as an expert. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Steve Paget. Some even may name me Steve Paget Jr. I have been sworn. I am the Executive Vice President of Follybrien Architecture in Bradenton and Sarasota. I have a bachelor's degree in design and a master's in architecture from Clemson University. Go Tigers! I'm also a product of the local educational group here and a Port Charlotte High School graduate, so go Pirates! Sorry, Todd. Been working in over 19 years, almost 20 years, on architecture. I am a member of the AIA, NCARB, Elite AP in Building Design and Construction, and I have provided prior testimony to the city as the project architect for the Herald Court Center.
My name is Reed Fellows. I am the Vice President of TR Transportation Consultants here in southwest Florida. I hold a bachelor's degree in civil engineering from Valparaiso University, and if I say "go Crusaders," everybody will scratch their heads, because they all know who these guys are.
I'm from Chicago, I know that.
There you go. I've been practicing traffic engineering for over 20 years, and I hold a professional engineer's license here in the state of Florida. And I've appeared in other quasi-judicial proceedings such as this, including the city of Punagorda, Lee County, and others in southwest Florida. And I tender my expertise as an expert here today.
At this time, I would ask the council represent, that the council, I have complete loss, that the council acknowledge and accept Katie Burkey, Ian Vincent, Reed Fellows, and Steve Paget as expert witnesses. And just as a footnote, I have an undergraduate degree from Duke University, so go Blue Devils! And clearly, none of us speak during basketball season. Good morning again. Jerry Waxler with the McCrory Law Firm, and as I stated before, I'm representing Akiasta Drive, Pontagorda U.S., Inc., which is requesting a rezoning from GS5 to Planned Development Village for a multifamily project. Up there, you can see the site plan, which consists of 22 condominium buildings, which will have 462 individual condo units, a clubhouse and recreation facility, which is located there, 25 parallel docks, which would be located in this area, and 24 slips and a multi-slip docking basin, which is located right there.
We can't see that. When you point to the screen there, our backs are to the screen, so if you could use the cursor, that would help us.
Okay. This is the area of the recreational facility. This is the area where the parallel docks are proposed, along there, and that is the area for the multi-slip dock basin. We additionally have 55 acres of open space, including just over 49 acres of wetland preservation. In this slide, I highlight this slide. This slide, the preservation areas are actually in gray. What you see in green are the open space, and I highlight that so that you can show that as we designed the site, we took into consideration the surrounding properties. So you have very large areas of preservation and/or green space that buffer almost all of the single-family. Even here, we have included an oversized green area, well in excess of the required buffer that the city has, to further protect the residents located in Buttonwood. And we took very great care to make certain that we place these buildings perpendicular so that the shortest side of the building is what faces Buttonwood, rather than looking at the full 200 feet of the building. Additionally, here, you have an area of green space as well, and you have mangroves that would be even then in front of that, so that even though this is condominium to condominium, you have additional green space here, additional green space there as well. And while you do have the docking facility here, the marina, beyond the marina, you have a considerable amount of green space, so the people who live in this location will look out over a marina and then over green space before you get to a vision or a view of a building. I've already spoken to and proffered our condition about joining the canal maintenance district. We also had a request to consider eliminating these parallel docks and instead to put up a dry storage facility. We would accept a condition. We can in fact place a dry storage facility in this location here. It makes no difference to us whether we have those parallel docks, the ability to utilize those parallel docks, or whether we would have a storage facility. We would accept either condition, and we'll leave that to the council to discuss in their discussions following our presentation. And whichever condition, if you would prefer that condition, to eliminate those parallel docks and incorporate a docking facility, we would accept that as a condition. There are several criteria that the planning commission must consider, and its determination must be based on substantial competent evidence. To that end, you will hear testimony today from five experts. Steve Paget, who is an architect and Executive Vice President of Follybrien, Katie Burkey, Certified Planner and Attorney with Kimley Horn, Reed Fellows, a Transportation Engineer with TR Transportation Consultants, Inc., and Ian Vincent, who is a biologist with Ian Vincent &amp; Associates, Inc. Following their presentations, I'll make concluding remarks. Steve?
So looking at this image here, this is an aerial of the site. And just to put in perspective again, running at the top here is Akiasta that runs east and west. This is the north. To the east, as Jerry mentioned, we have buffering all along that east border of the site, all along the south and the west. And as she also mentioned, we did take great care and strategically placed the building in the location adjacent to Buttonwood, so that we're looking at the small end or the short side of the building to minimize that visual impact. To the northwest corner over here, these buildings that are located are the only ones that really face open water. Everything else is internal to the site with ponds and lakes. And those three buildings are important, because they also are adjacent to the largest buildings that surround the site. So again, compatibility uses and issues there. One of the things that this site arrangement really does that helps out not just the neighboring communities, but also this site, is it really provides a really good sense of privacy and security, which I thought was very important to our clients as well. The design incorporates lots of open space, as Jerry just mentioned, so some of that comes in the form of green space that you'll see, water, ponds, retention ponds, lakes, and also some of the recreation spaces that we'll show you here in just a minute. The heights of the buildings were mentioned earlier. All three stories over parking, except for the clubhouse, it'll be a one-story facility. We will not exceed any height, any length that's required by the code, and we're not looking for any exceptions or deviations from that. The mass of the buildings was something that was discussed at great length before as well. We are looking for every opportunity that we can to break up that massing. We're looking at different types and various types of roofing. We're looking at different types of fenestration, balconies, breezeways, and different materials to really help minimize that visual impact as well. So that's something that we're really looking at. Again, this is a slightly closer view. You really get a better sense of some of the green space that's being provided. I'll show you the next slide, how that affects Akiasta. But again, lots of ponds, lots of lakes. And again, just to reiterate, the amount of natural vegetation that's remaining that really buffers the site from the neighbors and minimizes our impact. So we believe that it's our opinion as architects and also team members that this proposed PD, as shown, is really compatible with the neighboring properties and make us good neighbors. As we go to the next slide, we start looking at Akiasta. So Akiasta is here to the bottom of the sheet again, running east and west. And one of the things that we looked at was, as you enter this facility or you drive by it, there are three zones. You've got this large green lawn here. We've got this sort of activity zone, and then we've got another large lake. And the idea was that you have this nice green lawn. You've got court sports. They may be volleyball, they may be shuffleboard, pickleball, basketball, whatever they may be. But you have this zone of play, and then behind it, again, you've got this other amenity that serves as a large lake. And the idea is, you drive by, it opens up the site, creates vistas, and essentially creates a park-like setting that we think will be very compatible and compelling for the neighbors. All the buildings, as you see, are significantly off the property line, nestled in the existing wetlands, as you see, moving throughout the perimeter. Again, really enhancing privacy and security on-site, as well as buffering for the neighbors and their views. Some of the things that we're also looking at that was mentioned was energy efficiency. We're looking at things like passive and active energy systems. So any opportunity we can take advantage of breezeways, shading devices, landscaping, natural vegetation, overhangs, solar reflectance, anything that we can do to help take advantage of passing cooling are things that we're currently looking at. Other things that we're exploring, increased natural lighting, and also looking at north-facing glazing so that we can reduce energy costs as well. Some things particularly that will have importance in the clubhouse, auto dimming light switches, lights, LED timer sensors, auto flush valves for toilets and sinks, and low-flow fixtures. So again, we're really looking very hard at ways that we can make this a very efficient, environmentally-friendly project. So with that, you know, we really think that as this development moves forward, if it gets approved today, that we're going to look for every opportunity that we can to keep increasing those energy efficiencies as part of this PD. Lastly, we want to take a look at the docking... Lastly, we want to take a look at the docking facility. And it was mentioned also by Jerry. This is really just a series of boat slips. No structures attached to it. In fact, again, trying to be consistent, we've provided open space adjacent to this. So again, neighboring properties still get that park-like setting that we also are introducing along Akia Stah. Again, no structures. You have to go pretty far along into the site before you see those structures as you pass this facility. This image starts to talk a little bit as well about the design, even though preliminary, some of the things that we're looking at to break up the massing. We're looking at articulating vertical circulation, whether there are stairs, elevators, in doing so, looking for an element that would join those things and bridge that. So a roofing system here. And then you can start to see, we're looking at opportunities where we can change the different types of roofing to do a flat roof, pergolas, maybe a hip roof or gable roof. So as you look across that skyline, you don't see these massive structures. You get more of a village-type presence, and that's really important to us. So in doing that, we're looking at natural materials, muted colors in a palette that really blends in with the environment and the adjacent properties, pergolas and breezeways, as I mentioned before. And really, the idea is that we want to harmonize this project with the adjacent green spaces, natural vegetation on the site. And we really think that all those things considered, if this gets approved as we move forward, that this really, really will encourage creative innovative design. We really want to complement the city's visual character as it is and hopefully add to it. And in doing so, we'll look for other opportunities as we develop that architecture and design that we can really look at other ways to really complement and create superior architecture for this project. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Good morning again. For the record, Katie Burkey, and I have been sworn in, and from Kimley Horn. Because I submitted my full expert planners' report into the record and staff already detailed the property's location, zoning, and future land use, I will start by summarizing how, in my professional opinion, the proposed rezoning is consistent with all of the approval criteria and objectives. Specifically, the proposal meets the general rezoning approval criteria? First and second, the project is consistent with the comp plan, including the city's compatibility policies. As you'll see in my report, starting on page seven, I specifically address how the project is consistent with pertinent goals and policies of all elements of the comprehensive plan. And in the interest of time, I will not -- I will spare you walking through my full analysis line by line. But it is most important to note that the project is consistent with the future land use element and conservation element of the comp plan by having obtained the necessary permits from Army Corps of Engineers, as well as the Water Management District, utilizing the property for multifamily infill in a manner consistent with the surrounding residential character of the area already surrounded by development on all sides, as you saw from the aerial view, with service availability, well-minimized travel distances, trips generated, and natural resource impacts that are associated with sprawl generally. The project also reduces the overall density, as staff discussed, from the allowable five dwelling units per acre to 4.38 dwelling units per acre, which mitigates hurricane vulnerability, which is especially important in light of Irma, and conserving and enhancing over 49 acres of wetlands by clustering the development on the upland portions of the site. The proposal is also consistent with the housing element of the comp plan by providing a varied housing type at a higher density to accommodate current and projected needs of the city. The addition of the parallel boat slips, as well as the multi-slip docking facility in an existing waterfront area, as proposed by the applicant, is also consistent with and specifically encouraged by the coastal management element of the comp plan, specifically objectives 2B.1.1 and 2B.3.1. And as already discussed, the ultimate design of these slips and the docking facility have to be approved in a separate public hearing before the Canal Maintenance Advisory Board for a special permit. The project is also consistent with the recreation and open space elements of the comp plan by including private recreational opportunities to condo owners, such as the clubhouse with a pool and as well as the multi-slip docking facility. I will also touch on the consistency with the intergovernmental coordination, capital improvement, and public school facilities elements later on in my presentation. The next criterion related to agreements with the county and regional planning issues is not applicable in this case. Next, the proposed rezoning mitigates anticipated traffic impacts. Mr. Reed Fellows of TR Transportation Consultants will speak as to the traffic impacts next. The proposed rezoning is also compatible with the surrounding area. As the architect for the project already mentioned, the site is already in an area that contains a variety of housing types and is adjacent to manufactured homes, condos, as well as single-family development. Building heights will be maintained at three stories over parking, which is consistent with your code. And this is identical to the height of several condo buildings along Akia Stah, which are constructed much closer to single-family residences than is proposed for this PD. The proposed design also generates less traffic impacts than those expected under the property's current zoning, as Mr. Fellows will explain in detail. And the project also includes an articulated roofline, as you saw from the schematics, as well -- well, actually, I should mention that the roofline, in certain places, which will be the highest point, actually is open and will function as more of a breezeway. So you still have light and blue sky from the other side, as well as a step facade with patios, pergolas, and other building details that provide visual interest and also reduce building mass. And the building massing proposed is also consistent with the existing multifamily development and general characteristics of the surrounding neighborhood. And I apologize, I'm breathing for two. So if I sound winded, I am. A variety of development standards and design strategies are proposed to further ensure compatibility, including buffers and site-directed lighting, specifically the vegetation within the wetland preserve, which grows to heights of between 30 and 40 feet. And the landscaping buffers along the property lines will buffer and minimize any real or perceived impacts to the multifamily and single-family developments. In addition, as a PD, and as council is already aware, council may place conditions on the rezoning that even further ensure compatibility. As designed, proposed, and conditioned, the proposed PD will operate harmoniously with the surrounding community. And lastly, the availability letters included with the application provide that the proposed development will be adequately served by existing central water and sewer systems. Solid waste services and facilities are also available to support the project through the county's 2030 planning horizon. And as staff also mentioned, there will be a master stormwater management system to treat both runoff and maintain post-development discharge at pre-development levels consistent with the Water Management District criteria. With respect to open space, the 462 proposed condo units require 3.07 acres of recreation and open space. The project will provide 54.63 acres of recreation and open space, which greatly exceeds the level of service standard. With respect to schools, a school capacity availability letter of determination is not issued until development is approved, but the school district has experienced declining enrollment over the last 10 years. So it is anticipated that there will be sufficient capacity to accommodate the expected number of students that would be generated by this project. And Mr. Fellows will again confirm the level of service for Akia Stah and that it'll be maintained after the project is introduced. The request also achieves the city's PD objectives by promoting a harmonious mixture of both water-dependent and compatible multifamily and onsite recreation, land uses in proximity to the Ball Harbor Commercial Center. The proposed PD also encourages creative design and complements the city's visual character. As you saw from the schematics, the project is actually -- functions as a green oasis in a sea of existing development. And the proposed architectural treatment avoids massing and repetitive building types and facades, as I already detailed, as well as the architect. Adequate open space and recreation will be provided. And the project enhances and preserves unique features. While the property is not historically significant, the project will conserve and enhance over 49 acres of mangrove wetlands by clustering the development on the upland portions. And the addition of landscape buffers along the property lines will further enhance and preserve the scenic qualities of the property. The project promotes good transportation design, as we'll get into in the next presentation as well. And the project reduces public utility maintenance costs by utilizing efficient land use patterns. Specifically, the property is surrounded by development on all sides, as you saw from the aerial view, is within an urban area, and will be adequately served by existing facilities. It's also proximally located to existing commercial uses, which will conserve energy use by minimizing travel distances, trips generated, and natural resource impacts. The project is also consistent with the PD approval criteria. Again, the proposed PD conforms with the comp plan and is compatible with the surrounding area, as previously discussed. And any adverse impacts are mitigated through height limits, buffers, preserving the existing wetland vegetation, and site-directed lighting. Adequate public facilities already exist, as confirmed by the availability letters submitted with the application. Adequate transportation facilities will serve the project, as we'll provide in more detail. The proposal preserves ecologically sensitive areas, as I already touched on. And while there are no known unfavorable geological conditions, with respect to topography, the property does have a lower elevation with respect to the existing grade. Fill will be added to the property to mitigate this condition in a manner consistent with Water Management District criteria and FEMA regulations. The proposal includes appropriate noise attenuation measures, such as landscaping buffers along the property lines, and also the substantial existing vegetation that will be preserved in the wetland areas. And the proposed PD, if approved as conditioned, will also exhibit superior architectural treatment and site planning to satisfy this requirement. You'll notice in the staff report, the criteria added are the factors to be considered as part of the test for what is superior architectural treatment. So as approved, we will comply with that last criteria. And accordingly, it is my professional opinion that the project, as conditioned, meets or exceeds each of the individual standards and objectives necessary to approve the requested rezoning and is both appropriate and desirable in this location. So thank you. And if you have any questions, I'm available.
Thank you.
Good morning again. Reed Fellows, TR Transportation for the record, and I have been sworn. My presentation here is intended to be quite brief. The traffic report that we prepared was submitted as part of the application, is on file, and was also recognized by staff in the staff report, showing that, as discussed, the entitlement for the property was for 528 dwelling units. And as part of this application, we're looking at 462 multifamily units. And on the slide here, you can see there's a reduction in trips by converting the uses from single-family to multifamily. A question that came up during planning commission was, well, wait a minute. You're only dropping, you know, 60 units, but how come the trips are not dropping in consistency with that? Well, in general, as a rule of thumb, single-family units generate about 10 trips per day per unit. Multifamily generate anywhere from five to seven in that range per unit. So there's a reduction there. But it's also not a one-to-one ratio. It's actually a logarithmic ratio. So that's why the sternment between the drop in units and it's not a one-to-one ratio. But the key takeaway is, we will be generating less traffic than the entitled property as it is now, converting to the uses that we have here. And you'll see in the reductions, in the AMP hour, it's about 54%. And the second line should read PMP hour, I apologize for that, that's a typo, is about 55%. Now, the question came up earlier about buildability as compared to entitlements. Well, I just pulled out an old report that I was looking at as we were kind of establishing our strategy for the land uses here. And I can say that even with the buildable units of in the 300 range, dropping to multifamily will also reduce the amount of total trips experienced on the roadways. So by changing land use from a traffic perspective, there will be less traffic in either scenario. And the bottom-line key takeaway is that even after we grow the baseline traffic to our horizon year, which we chose as 2021 at this time, add our traffic to that, the area roadways will still be within the adopted levels of service as adopted by the city Punta Gorda and Charlotte County. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions. My report is on file, and we can address any issues that you have. Thank you.
Good morning again. For the record, Ian Vincent, Ian Vincent Associates. Environmentally, not much has changed since I spoke to you last time, but I am going to get everything on the record, so please bear with me. As you know, we permitted the site with the Water Management District and the Army Corps of Engineers in 2014. One thing I do want to clear up, and it's semantics. You've been hearing people throw around 49 acres of wetland. That's actually the wetland preserve, which encompasses an upland buffer around the wetland. So if you're looking at -- I guess I should probably have my exhibit up. It'll make it easier to -- oh, boy. I can't do this on it, so I don't know how to make it go. I broke it. I clicked that thing up in the right corner, so I don't know what that does. Maybe click that again up there, make it go away. There we go. I'm a biologist, not a computer guy. So anyway, as you look at the exhibit that I have here, which is our Wetland Impact Preserve map, you'll see that the actual wetland preserve is 40.88 acres with an 8.16 upland buffer. I know Mrs. LeBeau and Ms. Waxler and everyone's just been kind of saying 49 acres of wetland. But just so the record's clear, that 49 acres incorporates the wetland buffer, the wetland and the upland buffer preserve. As you can see on the map, we're preserving the majority of the wetlands on the site. Overall, about 90% of the wetlands are preserved, and 93% of the higher-quality wetlands. I don't know if it shows on there, but there's also a 1.36-acre wetland creation that was created adjacent to the docking facility. It was primarily created for water quality reasons, to ensure that the dock facility did flush. But it's going to be planted, and it'll function as any other wetland when it's all said and done. As I told you before, during the Water Management District and Corps permitting process, we did go through review with FWC, Florida Fish and Wildlife Conservation Commission, and the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service for woodstorks, Florida bonded bats, small-tooth sawfish, and manatees. The project was determined to not likely adversely affect any of those species. We updated our protected species assessment early in 2016, and at that time, we did find a new eagle's nest on the property. Without going into the whole history, there was a nest there right after Charlie. They nested for one year, and then they moved around for a while. We did find the nest, because I didn't find it until January. I began monitoring it right after. I did not see any eagles on the nest. I did see an eagle in the vicinity. Well, I think I told you before, I was not able to make any kind of professional determination of whether that nest was being used by the eagles, or if it was an owl, or an osprey, or something else. And as I told you before, it was in an Australian pine, which is not typical of eagles. And the reason is, those trees don't do well in storms. So guess what happened? I went out there on Sunday, and the nest is now gone. So it blew down in Irma. All of that said, it really doesn't matter, because as you can see on the site plan, in this area over here, we have given the nest, whether it's an eagle's nest anymore or not, the required 330-foot buffer that Fish and Wildlife Service requires.
What is that square that shows on Google Maps and shows on your -- that square-ish?
This thing? It looks like somebody wanted to dig a canal a long, long time ago. Because it's clearly man-made, and it's cut into thick limestone. So somebody had some fun with the backhoe. So somebody, somebody had some fun with the backhoe? I really don't know, but it was, it was not claimed as a wetland by either agency. It's what's called an other surface water. They still have jurisdiction over it, but, so you have to get a permit to impact it, but they do not require mitigation, because it truly has no function, no wetland function. With that said, that's all that I have to say. I'll be around if you have any questions. Thank you.
Again, Jerry Waxler. At this time, I would like to enter into the record as exhibits all of our application materials, which included the protected species assessment prepared by Ian Vincent and the traffic study prepared by Reed Fellows of TR Transportation, the expert planners report, which I handed to you at the beginning, but which was included in your agenda packet. I handed it to you just for ease of reference, rather than as a separate item into the agenda, all the resumes which were submitted and have been provided to the clerk, as well as the PowerPoint presentation, which has been preserved electronically and will also be given to the clerk in electronic format. Future land use planning and zoning are not a contract with the community. Both sets of regulations may be amended upon the request of an applicant, and is showing that the request meets the adopted standards for granting the amendment. In this instance, the applicant seeks no change to your comprehensive plan. The property is designated low-density residential, and our proposed plan is consistent with that land use designation, as well as with the density limitations of that land use designation. In our application, we also addressed numerous other policies within your comprehensive plan, because we must be consistent with it all. And we looked at numerous other and have addressed them, in fact, and found, our report, the application and the planners' report, found that we, in fact, are consistent with the comprehensive plan, and that is concurred by your planning staff. What is requested today is an amendment of your zoning map from its existing GS5 to planned development. A PD, rather than straight monthly family, was requested for several reasons, and this was a specific question asked by Councilmember Matthews. First, as you, as heard from staff, your straight multifamily zoning allows for 15 units per acre. We would have had to both amend the comp plan and then ask for zoning that could have allowed up to 15 units with no other limitations. We didn't think you all would be very amenable to that, and we didn't think the surrounding community would like the possibility that they could have something that would go up to 15 units per acre. That was the first reason that we chose PD. The second is that unlike a straight rezoning, a PD locks in the concept plan. Again, we felt that the community and this council would prefer to see exactly what was proposed and know that if it is approved, that proposal is all that can be built on the site. That was the second reason for a planned development rezoning. The third is that your GS15 does not require the preservation of wetlands, GM15, nor does your, your, your other, your codes. As Councilmember Matthews indicated, with additional permitting and potentially additional modifications and mitigation, we could impact additional wetlands, certainly not all the wetlands, but we could impact other wetlands. This site plan locks in as preservation those wetlands on the site, and we felt that that was a benefit to the PD rezoning. And finally, unlike a straight rezoning, a planned development rezoning provides the council with the ability to impose conditions to that rezoning. Given the community's concern and what we heard at the last hearing, we believe that a planned development rezoning and the ability to impose conditions would be something that the council would want to have, and that would want to retain that ability. One condition that we are proposing at this time, in addition to the others that you have heard, is that the project be designed with shielded lighting, so that light does not escape the boundaries of the site. We would accept, we would propose that condition and would accept a condition like that being imposed. Both city staff and our expert planner, Katie Burkey, identified the planned development objectives, the specific approval criteria for a PD, and the more general rezoning approval criteria, and addressed them, and found that this proposal is consistent with them. Steve Paget addressed the various design and compatibility criteria, and as indicated, Katie addressed each and every of the criteria and showed how we meet them. Reed Fellows established that the proposed rezoning will generate less traffic than the existing zoning on the site, and that all traffic generated will remain within the city and county's adopted levels of service. Again, we had a question about how many units can you actually fit on the site. Single-family is not just, when people think single-family, they think a reflection of what Punta Gorda Isles is, detached single-family homes on an approximately 80-foot-wide lot. But single-family can be a range of uses. It can be attached townhomes or villas. It can be small, not under your codes, but actually under state statute, manufactured housing must be allowed wherever single-family homes are allowed, manufactured housing, as well as, as I indicated, townhomes, as well as cluster and other forms. So when you talk about what you can fit on the site, it differs depending on the product that you're looking to accommodate. In our last hearing, we had done a cluster site plan with detached single-family homes that allowed for 300, I don't remember the exact number, 300 and, 320?
Four-seven?
307 units. As you heard from Reed, even at 307 single-family units, this proposal generates less traffic than a plan that we had just kind of put together to see what we could fit on the site with detached housing. So I think that's important. The other thing that I wanted to address was, again, Councilmember Matthews' question about why the last PD had a multitude of conditions with regard to traffic. In addition to the residential uses proposed on the site in the last PD, we proposed some significant commercial uses. The inclusion of those commercial uses meant that the proposed traffic, while remaining within your adopted levels of service, exceeded the traffic that single-family development would have occurred. This project reduces the transportation impacts of your existing single-family residential development. And for that reason, since you already have single-family zoning on the site, it is presumed that you have taken into account the impacts of that single-family. And because we are reducing that, those additional transportation conditions are not necessary, because we've actually reduced impacts, whereas last time, we increased the impacts. You also heard from Ian Vincent, who has monitored the project regularly for, I think, over 10 years. He addressed the protected species and indicated that there is a determination that the development will have no adverse impacts to any protected species. And he also detailed the extraordinary amounts of preservation and wetland mitigation and enhancement that will occur if the rezoning is approved. The expert testimony of our witnesses is supplemented by the review and conclusions of your city staff, which has found that this proposal meets all criteria. Staff has recommended approval. Your Planning Commission also unanimously recommended approval, and has been, as has been established by an abundance of substantial competent evidence, the project meets all of your standards for approving this PD rezoning. This is the last large undeveloped tract in the city of Punta Gorda. Its acres of mangrove wetlands make it unsuited for the quarter-acre, single-family residential lot development that is the hallmark of Punta Gorda Isles. The wetlands should be preserved, and the remaining uplands should be developed in a manner that provides view sheds for the surrounding residents to these beautiful preserved wetlands. Single-family development under your existing zoning will generate more traffic, preserve less wetlands, reduce open space and buffers, and provide no view sheds to the preservation areas. Change isn't always a bad thing. We allowed change in the city of Punta Gorda, and that provided us the ability to develop the Sheraton, which it and its tiki bar are utilized all the time by the citizens of Punta Gorda. We had to change zoning on the Loop property. It was zoned for purely single-family or agricultural development. That zoning had to be changed to allow for the development of that project. And a long, long time ago, Punta Gorda Isles, which at the time was all mangrove wetlands like we are preserving on this site, had to have a change in zoning and approval by the city council, probably much to the consternation of the adjacent neighbors, to allow for the development of the Punta Gorda Isles community. The proposed PD rezoning, with its enhanced preservation, buffers, view sheds, and open space, and its reduced traffic and environmental impacts, is more compatible with the spirit and the vision of Punta Gorda than single-family development of this site ever would be. Based on the evidence presented today, we respectfully request that the plant, that the city council approve this rezoning to Planned Development Village. We're available if you have any questions, and of course, reserve the ability to rebut comments that are made. At city councils, at the Planning Commission, as questions were asked, we came up and responded to them as they were asked, which made sure we didn't miss anything. Sometimes if you wait to the end, you miss. We will handle that whichever way the council prefers. We can ask questions and then may just, we didn't rebut, but we may answer questions and then just save final comments for rebuttal. So however you prefer to proceed.
Would that be fine?
Sorry.
Okay. Questions for the applicant before we?
I have a couple.
Yes?
Jerry.